It is January 7, 6:00 PM. I'm going to call the regular former meeting, Iowa City regular former meeting in order. Roll call, please.
Alter, here. Burgess?
Here.
Harmson?
Here.
Mo?
Here.
Saleh? Here. Okay, our first item is proclamation. And this is a human trafficking prevention and awarenessments. It will be read by Council Hansel.
Whereas, human trafficking is the use of force, fraud, or coercion to compel a person into commercial sex acts or labor services against their will. Exploitation of a minor for commercial sex is human trafficking. Regardless of whether any form of force, fraud, or coercion was used, there is no such thing as quote "child prostitution" end quote. And whereas, despite increased advocacy and resources, there remains a stark gap between the number of survivors receiving assistance and the successful prosecution of perpetrators, with fewer than 5% of reported trafficking cases in the Midwest resulting in criminal convictions in 2023. And whereas, despite increased awareness and efforts, human trafficking continues to be underreported and often undetected, with the true extent likely underestimated due to its clandestine nature and the reluctance of victims to come forward. Studies suggest that only about 1% of trafficking victims are identified. And whereas, every business community, organization, faith community, family, and individual can help protect the vulnerable by addressing the problem of internet sex trafficking and exploitation, especially of Iowa's children. Childhood has shifted nationwide from a play base to a screen base, with teens reporting spending an average of nine hours online daily. One in five youth aged 10 to 17 reporting contact with an online predator, though many cases go unreported. In 2023, platforms like TikTok, Facebook, and YouTube flagged millions of pieces of child sexual abuse materials, referring them to the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children. And whereas, the city of Iowa City joins Chains Interrupted in their dedication to provide community outreach and education, legislative advocacy, training, promotion of services to survivors of human trafficking, and collaboration with law enforcement. Now therefore, I, Sean Harmson, on behalf of Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim the month of January to be Human Trafficking Prevention and Awareness Month in Iowa City, and encourage all our residents to become more informed on this growing problem, to be vigilant and report suspicious activity, and to work towards solutions to end trafficking in all its forms in our community. And then I believe if, yes, Teresa Davidson, and is Zoe Lee here with you tonight?
May.
From, Teresa is CEO and co-founder of Chains Interrupted.
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you for reading this. Thank you so much. Again, I'm Teresa Davidson, CEO of Chains Interrupted, and it's difficult to imagine that human trafficking exists in Iowa communities, but it does. Take the case of Leila, name changed for privacy, a 16-year-old girl who got away from the trafficker that brought her to Iowa City from another state. She was found hiding in a business in Cedar Rapids. Leila didn't know who to trust and was too scared to be forthcoming about her situation. Fortunately, this business had received training by Chains Interrupted and recognized the signs of trafficking. From the training, they also knew how to talk with the teen in a way that didn't scare her off or traumatize her further. They called Chains Interrupted to talk them through the next steps, and we are happy to report that the girl is safe and back with the family in the state that she came from. So thank you, Mayor Teague, Mayor Protam Saleh, the City Council, law enforcement, educators, and community leaders of Iowa City for your commitment to raising awareness and taking action to combat human trafficking in your community. If you, your friends, family, workplace, church, school, or community group are interested in any of the 18 specialized training programs, please contact us at info@chainsinterrupted.com. Thank you so much.
Okay, next item to be is Maltrusor King Jr. Day.
Whereas Dr. Maltrusor King Jr., who was born in January 15, 1929, devoted his life to justice and equality for people of all races and economic standings through nonviolence means, which led to the establishment of many federal and local laws prohibiting discrimination and fostering human rights. And whereas, Dr. King and the civil rights movement helped change public policy from segregation to integration, thereby leading to passing of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, the Voting Rights Act of 1965, and other anti-discrimination laws aimed to ending economic, legal, and social segregation in America. And whereas, Dr. King believed that service was the soul, the soulless highest purpose, and was path of happiness and freedom, one says, saying, "Life's most pressing and urgent questions is, what are you doing for others?" Which led to communities across the country to answer the question by coming together to honor Dr. King by helping their neighbors and communities through thousands of service projects spread across all 50 states. And whereas, even with the gains of the civil rights movement over years, there are many goals and needs that must be pursued to continue our commitment to achieve justice in our society, including a commitment to economic justice in the face of the increasing disparity between rich and poor. And whereas, as we look in forward to the future with optimism, inspired by Dr. King's legacy, and informed by his wisdom and vision, let us rededicate ourselves to keeping his dream alive and be reminded that we are united together as one community. Now therefore, I am Mazahe Saleh, the Mayor Protam of Iowa City, on behalf of Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim Monday, January 20, 2025, to be the Maltrusor King Day in Iowa City, and encourage all to recommend themselves to achieving Dr. King's dream by attending the annual Dr. King March programs and day of services at Mercer Park Accretive Center on Monday, December 20, with march starting at 9:30 AM. And here to accept, we have two. We have Roger Lussala on behalf of the Human Rights Commission, and Roy Sam Porter, former Johnson County Board of Supervisor, and the President of Black Voices Project.
I'm here, Roger Lussala, representing the Iowa City Human Rights Commission. Thank you again for the proclamation and recognizing the work of Dr. King. Dr. King left us with many, many powerful words, and we always strive to live toward that. And many of us remember always the "I have a dream." But Dr. King also left us with many other teachings. And today, I wanted to highlight four of the teachings of Dr. King. One of the other powerful ones was the hope, standing up for what's right, silence speaks louder, and keeping the faith. When Dr. King was talking about hope, he said, "We must accept finite disappointment, but never lose infinite hope." And Dr. King also always talking about standing up for what's right, the time is always right to do what's right. And silence, in the end, we would remember not the word of our enemy, but the silence of our friends. And when you're talking about faith, you say faith is taking the first step even when we don't see the whole staircase. Thinking about what's going on in our world today, and especially in our country right here, and when our government and especially our state is jamming down our throat, and especially local institutions eliminating diversity and equity and inclusion through our colleges and universities, and even, and this is the time that we appreciate the City Council even more for you guys standing up for what's right, and always promoting and putting forward more to really celebrate the diversity that we have in Iowa City, and always, that's why we appreciate you guys for the work that you do. So thank you for what you do.
Like they said, former Johnson County Supervisor, President of Black Voices. Today, I come before you with gratitude and reflection as we prepare to honor the life and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. The theme for this year's observance is Mission Possible. Protecting freedom, justice, and democracy in the spirit of nonviolence 365 is both timely and very necessary. Dr. King dedicated his life to the fight for justice and equality, but he did so with an unwavering commitment to peace and nonviolence. He showed us that it is possible to challenge the injustices of the world, to confront hatred and oppression, and to demand change, all without losing our humanity or resorting to violence. This theme is a call to action for all of us. It asks us to unite as a community, to protect the freedoms and democratic values we hold dear, and to ensure justice is not just a word, but a reality. And I'm going to repeat that again, to ensure that justice is not just a word, but a reality for everyone, regardless of their background. It reminds us that progress is only sustainable when it is achieved with integrity and in the spirit of peace. As we reflect on this theme, let us commit to carrying forward Dr. King's vision in our daily lives, not just on Martin Luther King Day, but every day. Whether through advocacy, service, or simply how we treat one another, we each have a role to play in building a world that is more just, equitable, and united. Let us remember that freedom and justice are not just ideals. They are responsibilities we all share. And democracy is only as strong as the people who protect it. Dr. King believed in the possibility of a better world, and so must we. Thank you. And I want to just say that we do invite each and every one to come out on January 20 to Mercer Park. Like Mazahe said, we will start at 9:30 with the march, marching over from the East Dale Plaza over to Mercer Park, and then from Mercer Park, we will have a bell-ringing ceremony along with the program. So we ask that you come out, and this is for everyone. It is not just a day of off of services, it is a day of service. Thank you.
Item number three, consent calendar. May I have a motion to approve consent calendar, item 3 to 7?
So moved, Mo.
Moved by, okay.
Second, Alter.
Okay. Discussion, public discussion for the items 3 to 7. If non-council discussion?
I was very pleased to see items 6, C, D, E, and F all under budget. Thank you, Public Works.
Okay, roll call, please.
Harmson, yes. Mo?
Yes.
Lussala?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Motion passed 5 to 5. Okay, now is the time for public comment. And please, this is only for the item that not on the agenda, and leave your comment to be three minutes, please. Is there is anyone from the public would like to comment on any item that is not on the agenda? Okay, I see no one. Okay, item number nine, do we close the public comment?
No, that's fine. And I, I'm sorry, were you talking about the community comment?
Yes.
No, I think we're done.
That's it, we're done.
Yeah.
Okay, item nine, planning and zoning matter. Nine A, rezoning of ACT. An order conditionally rezoning of a ground setly for 48 by and six acres appropriately located on north of North Scott Boulevard and east of North Dodge Street. From office research park zone and interim development research park zone to mixed-use zone. And?
And if I may, Councilor Alter is recusing herself due to a legal conflict on this item.
Sure, I'm going to open the public hearing. And now we have our staff, Danielle, the coordinator of the Development Services.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Danielle Sissman, Neighborhood Services, Neighborhood Development Services. As you introduced, this is a rezoning for a portion of the ACT property located, as you said, east of North Dodge Street. It's primarily the part highlighted here, or it is the part highlighted here, which is mostly the circle drive that's existing, the buildings that are inside that circle and some of the land to the south of that. For orientation, the parking lot that you see just to the south of the circle is what's adjoining the building that was recently sold to the School District, just to the southwest of that, are the two white-roofed buildings, which are the Oaknoll, I'm sorry, yeah, Oaknoll properties as well. So the applicant in this case is Jim Bergman of Iceberg Development. They are proposing a rezoning of this property to mixed-use development from its current designation as research park, office research park, and interim development research park, which is what ACT operated under when they were the primary occupants of this entire campus. The purpose of the rezoning is reuse of the existing office campus, those buildings shown inside the circle drive there, as housing and potential future development. No specific development is currently being proposed with this rezoning. However, the developer has expressed interest in adaptively reusing some of the existing buildings into senior housing while leaving a portion of the buildings for continued ACT office use and space. And this shows the existing zoning today. A little bit of background about this property, it was annexed into the city quite some time ago. The records are a little bit less accessible because of that timeframe, and we certainly have changed the way we do zoning over the years. It was annexed in the 60s and 70s. This subject property contains four property tax ID parcels. They have never been platted, meaning they've never been a part of a subdivision before City Council. They contain buildings and surface parking lots and private drives. The buildings are mostly vacant at this time, except for the space currently still being used by ACT for office space. And the drives that you see are private streets. They were not built as public streets, and they're not within public right-of-ways. As I said, there's no specific development at this time, but the overall intent is for reuse of the buildings for housing, for senior housing, and continued use of office space. So under the current zoning, about five and a half acres are office research park, the remaining 43 acres are interim development designation. That interim designation is just a placeholder that has been used over the years for land to potentially be future developed. That's why it's a little odd that there's a campus here, and that just highlights the fact that we've changed the way we approach zoning over the years in the city. At this point, the proposed rezoning would be to mixed-use MU district for all 48 and a half acres of that land. Mixed-use development allows a variety of both residential and non-residential uses. The proposed concept for development would fit within that zoning district designation. It would also allow office, retail, and eating establishments. So the future development that might occur on some of the remaining vacant land in this could certainly develop under those use categories. When we look at a rezoning, we do review two general approval criteria for a regular rezoning, a conventional rezoning. The applicant is not requesting any variation of the zoning standards for mixed-use zoning, and there are no impacts to sensitive features. So because of those two things, there's no trigger in this rezoning process to require a planned overlay zoning, so an OPD. This is just MU without any of the overlays associated with other rezonings that you've seen in the past. So looking at those two rezoning criteria, first we look at consistency with the comprehensive plan. We look at the future land use map, which is the inset map here showing the Office Research Development Center. Color applied to most of this campus, most of the land held by ACT. That reflects the fact that in 2013, when this cop plan was last developed, we were looking at the existing land use, which was a very stable use at the time. The plan itself, other than the map, does contain principles for appropriate development other than what's shown in that map. And those principles express compatible infill, preference for housing, a variety of housing, and it does provide the flexibility that we would see over time in a future early in use map in a comprehensive plan. So comprehensive plans are not zoning, they're just a direction for the future. So staff feels that this is an appropriate plan, plan change, or appropriate zoning change, sorry, consistent with the comprehensive plan. And the land is also located in the Northeast District Plan District. That was developed prior to 2013, I believe, as 1999. That plan itself did focus primarily on the fact that this was an ACT campus, but it did leave the door open for the fact that, other than this 48 acres, there's a large amount of land in the area, perhaps more than it would be needed even for an office research park at the time, and left the door open for other compatible uses, including residential. So because of those things, staff feels that this is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Also looking at compatibility with the neighborhood character. The area surrounding the property is largely undeveloped. Like I said, I pointed out those other landmarks in the area, the Oaknoll East Senior Residential, the School District offices, and MU zone would be consistent with those surrounding developments and those surrounding uses. The subject property does contain regulated sensitive features. A sensitive areas development plan is not required at the time of this conventional rezoning. That means they just, in the future, any development would need to avoid impacting sensitive areas and fully comply with our sensitive areas ordinance, or else they would have to go through a rezoning and address those impacts. So that would be addressed at the time of future redevelopment. So any future development, we need to study that and take that into account. We have processes to ensure that that's regulated when it does. Looking at transportation, again, looking at the existing street network here, again, those are private. They were not developed with the oversight of the city necessarily. We're not sure if they're condition, but we do want to ensure that as development does occur in this area, that all of that road network is interconnected, rational, able to support traffic. So those are the things that would be addressed at the time of plating, and we've incorporated conditions into this rezoning to ensure that that happens. The other thing that we looked at as part of this rezoning is the impact of additional development or additional traffic in the neighborhood. We did ask the applicant to provide a traffic study to the city, taking into account the kinds of uses that could occur under this rezoning, and to study the traffic that those potentially could generate, and to anticipate what kinds of changes in the future would be required to the street network to accommodate those. At this point, staff is not recommending any off-site transportation improvements, like additional lanes for turning or traffic signals, but we would require with future development to again, re-study those with future traffic studies, so that if they do need to be implemented, they're accommodated as part of the development at the time that that development happens. As I said, staff is recommending several conditions to ensure the creation of the interconnected block and street network, and to ensure that eventually the road network becomes a public road network. So this is the recreated steps of the development for this property, as we can kind of research that, starting with the annexation, and showing you highlighted in blue the step we're at tonight, which would be the rezoning. Eventually, there will need to be plaits and final plaits filed, as well as any site plans and building permits for new construction. So the applicant did hold a good neighbor meeting in October, and based on a review of the relevant general criteria, staff recommended approval of the proposed rezoning with four conditions. At its meeting in November, the Planning and Zoning Commission, by a vote of four to zero, concurred with staff's opinion and recommended approval of the staff-recommended conditions. Those conditions are largely related to the timing for improvements, tying them to new building construction, with the understanding that the applicant wants to reuse existing buildings and accommodating that as much as possible, while still ensuring that we have the ability to ensure that the public good is satisfied for street network and some of those other things. And that includes plating, like I said, for the private street network eventually. The conditional zoning agreement has been signed tonight, so we have that on file. I'm happy to answer questions. We do, of course, have the development team here.
Any question? Daniel?
Yeah, curious, Danielle, the mixed-use versus OPD planned overlay decision-making sort of point, I'd love to hear your thinking on how you make that decision, of course, with the applicant, and why this is recommended for MU over OPD.
So we can't force anyone to do an OPD. Conventional zoning districts exist, and that's what the intention is, that most of the time, that would be a choice that could be made. We do check to make sure that an applicant isn't painting themselves into a corner where they have to do a rezoning anyway. So sensitive features are usually the thing that we start by making sure everyone's aware that if they exist, how much development potential you have before you start impacting those, and if you, you know, makes sense to just go ahead and study it now and plan for it, to do that. Those thresholds are there for a reason, but they're usually give you some wiggle room. So an MU district is appropriate at this time for the level of development that they're currently contemplating, which is simply reusing existing buildings. So while an OPD is nice, because you can kind of get to see the whole big master plan picture, not every development has that ready to go in their pocket, and they want to just get started where they can get started.
Understood. I guess the follow-up question then, too, would be with the roads that would potentially, at the moment of plating, would probably, that negotiation would happen, and when they become public roads? Is that, am I correct that that's when that negotiation would happen?
Yeah, I don't know if I have all the triggers straight in my head as far as the conditions of when things are required, but our intention, the way we structured these, is that before there's someone living in those buildings, who's either prudentially going to be disrupted by a road that fails, or a road that needs to be replaced while they're living there, we want to get that addressed. So it may very well be that the roads are two cities' standards, we just don't know that at this point, because we weren't involved, like we would be, in a public street development, where we release them and accept them as public infrastructure. So the triggers are there in place to ensure that that's studied, documented, and addressed if it needs to be before their new residents are.
Okay, thanks.
Good. Any other questions? Okay, now we open it to the public, public discussion, or the developers, yeah?
Steve Long, Salida Partners, and representing the development group as well. Just, I wanted, this is a big, exciting project for Iowa City. Having watched the campus go from 1,000 employees to what it is now, we have an opportunity here to bring something unique that fits the comprehensive plan and the goals of Iowa City. And so I'm excited to be a part of this, and I just wanted to introduce the rest of the development team, because this is 48 acres of 400. You're going to be seeing a lot of us as we work with this community and the city staff over the next year or so. But we do, we're excited to start the reuse immediately, and we do have someone here, Kurt Attick, who's the CFO of Intermediary, which is a spinoff of ACT.
It's the renamed ACTA after the sale transaction. So if you have any direct questions about what their thoughts are, Kurt is here. Also have Mike Walsh, who many of you probably know, with Shoemaker-Holland, civil engineer. And we have a bunch of shy, heady folks here as well. Mark Sebold, architect, Nick Hatz, civil engineer, and Travis Wright as well. So we look forward, and we're going to work with the city staff as the comprehensive plan evolves for the eastern 300-plus acres, and then the next deal probably sees would be for the commercial area along Dodge Street or Highway 1. So just wanted to make that intro. Get any questions, let us know.
Any other public discussion? Okay, before I close the public hearing, I would like to know if you are inclined to vote as a planning and zoning. Okay, close the public hearing. Now I would like first consideration. Please motion to have a first comparison, please.
So moved, second, Harmson.
Okay, moved by Gosh, Mo, and second by Harmson. Okay, council discussion. Council discussion.
Be supporting this, because it's what we need, I think.
Yeah, it's really great, yeah.
Very happy to see a second life for that beautiful space in Iowa City.
I was just going to say, I appreciated staff walking us through how residential was acceptable, and we know it is so needed. So I appreciate all of that.
And mixed use fits our
Exactly.
Our vision for the city, so.
Yeah, and I live by that area, so I just like to see something there, yeah.
Make it beautiful.
Yes. Great. Any other thing? Okay. Roll call, please.
Mo?
Yes.
Sala?
Yes.
Alter?
Burgus?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Motion basis five to five.
Four to zero.
Four to zero.
Four, because
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's fine.
Four to five.
Four to zero.
Four to zero.
Four to zero, sorry.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. Item 9B, rezoning Cardinal Heights. Orders conditionally rezoning approximately 27.68 acre of property located east of Camp Cardinal Boulevard and west of Camp Cardinal Road from low-density multifamily residence zone with a planned development overlay to a low-density multifamily residential zone with a planned development overlay. And now I'm going to open the public hearing, and we have our staff again.
Thank you again. If it sounds like you just repeated that, you did. The zoning district is changing from what exactly it was
Yes.
In title to the same thing, but it's a little bit of a quirk of our code where we need to go through this process in order to change some of the terms of what that OPD involves. So the subject property is highlighted here in white. This is part of Cardinal Heights subdivision, and this specific change is to allow waivers to the minimum front setback and maximum allowable building height for the multifamily building located on Lot 11 within this dotted area here. It's highlighted here in red. This property was originally rezoned to the zoning designation in 2022, and after that rezoning, actually did go through the steps of plating, so it has a final plat in place as well. The approved rezoning at that time allows for the things shown here on the screen that has 23 lots, a variety of duplex townhome and multifamily, the street network as it's shown here, and a density, dwelling unit density of 3.1 dwelling units per acre. As I said, the request tonight is just to change a small part of that, but because of the type of change that they're requesting, it does have to go through this process. So what they're requesting for this outlined in red area is a setback reduction, so a five-foot reduction in the minimum front yard requirement setback, so reducing it from a 20-foot setback to a 15-foot setback, a seven-foot increase to the maximum building height, so allowing the building to be 42 feet in height instead of 35, and it's only just for this one building. Because this is an OPD, there are additional zoning approval or zoning criteria that review in order to improve it, approve it. Due to the impacts to the sensitive areas proposed, this was an OPD originally to accommodate the impacts to the sensitive areas. There were no additional waivers at the time of the first rezoning, so there were no changes to setbacks or heights, so that would be new as part of this application. This proposed rezoning does not change the mix of uses or any impacts to sensitive areas, but does contain, like I said, those two waivers to setbacks in height. And all of the previous analysis for the first rezoning remains the same, except for the need for an additional review of the highlighted criteria here on this slide. So that is, like I said, a reduction in front setback, basically to accommodate the building on the site. When they got down to the level of detail of analyzing how this building would lay out exactly on the site, there's challenges due to terrain and the sensitive features, also the needed to meet our fire department fire codes, and there were several options to address fire codes. Some of them involved more paving, some of them involved reducing the setback. So in this case, the best solution, we staff feels, is what the applicant is proposing, which is a reduction to the front setback. Many other residential uses in the city have a similar front setback, so a 15-foot setback is not that extensive a reduction. The building height increase to 42 feet is also to accommodate this particular building and its design. It would be, only appear to be 35 feet, however, from the front or the south side along the public street. The rear facade will appear greater than 35, but where it's exposed, it actually is buffered from everything around it by quite a bit of area, which is a wooded area as well. So it's not like it's immediately adjacent to another building and would be much larger than would be expected. Staff does find this request acceptable, and we feel like all of the public good that needs to still be accommodated can be accommodated with these changes. This is an exhibit that shows at the top the elevation of this building that was shown at the first rezoning and the elevation of the building that's being shown again. It's really not going to change the overall appearance of this building quite a bit. Obviously, they've continued to refine their material choices and the design of the building, which is normally acceptable. We don't highly regulate the building design at this point in the rezoning. This is just for concept, to realize that these changes really aren't all that much of an impact. Sensitive areas review, this subject property does contain regulated wetlands, woodlands, and slopes. As part of that final plat, all of those areas have been put into conservation easements, protected legally, so they're not being impacted. This building would stay out of those easements. These waivers help to do that. So the proposed rezoning does not change those easements or the protections already in place. And this slide again shows where we are at redoing a rezoning here this evening to incorporate those additional waivers. Based on the review of the relevant general and specific criteria, staff recommended approval of the proposed rezoning with one condition. That condition was the same condition as incorporated in the original rezoning. At its December 4th meeting, by a vote of seven to zero, the Planning and Zoning Commission concurred with staff's opinion and recommended approval of the staff recommended conditions, and we also have a signed CZA tonight. Happy to answer questions.
Any question?
I think the idea of not wasting space is great, and reducing the front setback makes sense. I want to make sure I do fully understand, though, that the topography of this site means that the parking is on the backside and not visible. There's not a parking structure visible from the front that's 15 feet from the road.
Right.
Am I understanding everything correctly?
Is in the rear or under the building?
Yeah, very good. So.
You mentioned that, excuse me, that there were other examples in the Iowa City area of that reduced setback. I'm sorry to put you to the spot, as though you have
Sure. It probably feels different in different neighborhoods, because 15 feet on, right? It's a very, that would be a very traditional north-side neighborhood setback, and the streets there, you probably wouldn't even notice. But we also have incorporated in our Form-based Code districts to reduce setbacks by that much. Really, what's the constraint in a front yard is making sure there's room for the utility easement to still be there. The setback isn't as important, really, to the city. We still have plenty of room for, you know, sidewalks and all those things that need to be up front as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question? Okay, now we're going to move to the public discussion. Anyone from the public would like to address this matter?
Gina Landau from Navigate Homes. I'm Vice President in Charge of Land Development. I wasn't involved in this when this Lot 11 was originally approved in 2022. I've only been with Navigate for a little over a year or so. But so, once we finally delved into actually designing a building and trying to place it on-site, is when this all started to, we started to realize, ooh, that's not going to work what we had before. So the 15-foot reduction, the setback, is purely driven by the fire department and requesting so they have enough room to get their ladder trucks up. So it's more for, it's a safety measure, it's not something that we really requested. It's from the fire department. And then the building height was pretty well described by Danielle. It'll still look like the normal 35 that you're used to, but the back appears to be four stories because of the parking. So that's really what those two items are. So I do have my engineer here, Brian, from Holland-Holland, if you have any more technical items than I can address.
Sure.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone from the public I see now? Before we close the public hearing, I would like to see if you are going to vote inclined with planning and zoning. Okay. Close the public hearing. And now I would like to have, may I have a motion to give first consideration, please?
So moved, Mo.
By Mo.
Second, Alter.
Second by Alter. Council discussion.
I appreciated getting the specific, the add-on to say that these were the reasons for those requests, so thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for that, yeah. Any discussion? Okay. Roll call, please.
Sala?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgus?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Motion basis five to zero. Okay, item number 9Z, rezoning Western Home. An orders conditionally rezoning approximately 31.65 acres of property located east of Camp Cardinal Road and North Gathering Place Lane for medium-density single-family residential with a planned overlay development to medium-density single-family residential with a planned overlay development. And now also, we are going to open the public hearing. Our staff, Danielle again.
Thank you. Again, a repeat of a lot of those zoning districts. Again, this is just an OPD rezoning that needs to have some slight changes made to it, but there are changes that the city council has to consider. Some changes we can do administratively, and there are actually some in this application that we would approve administratively and are, but there are several that do still require city council consideration of. So the purpose of this rezoning is to amend this approved prelim OPD plan for the area shown in the white dash here, to allow for the conversion of a cul-de-sac within this called Camille Court from five single-family homes to one single building, elder apartment building with 16 units in it instead, and a rehabilitation and wellness area for residents to use. This entire development is part of a senior living community, and that wellness center would serve the community. This shows the zoning exhibit. So the current zoning is 31 acres of this zoning district. As I said, there's a unit count associated with the OPD plan that was approved. The unit count would change slightly with this proposed rezoning, like I said, substituting those five single-family homes for one 16-unit multifamily building. There's also, if you do the tally, some of the numbers don't add up, and that's because the administrative changes are part of what they're proposing as well, but those can be accommodated administratively. This is a substantive change, as I said, and we'll walk you through it. So the approved preliminary platform 2023 is what's shown here on the screen. Second, there we go. The Camille Court circled in red, that's the cul-de-sac with the five single-family homes on it in concept that's going to be altered with this OPD rezoning. This shows that change, again, for the substitution of that building type. The areas circled in green here are those that can be administratively changed, and so that's what's resulting in the slightly different unit count overall. No sensitive feature changes are happening here. All of this development is pretty minor, but as I said, requires this process. This zoning is an OPD rezoning, so we see the additional criteria in addition to the general criteria. None of the general criteria are really changing, is still compliant with the comprehensive plan, is still a mix of housing, diverse of housing types, still meets all the density expectations, gets compatible with the adjacent neighborhood. Included in the analysis that are these additional criteria that come with an OPD. Overall, the proposed plan complies with the plan unit densities. It's a proposed mix of housing types that complements existing homes nearby and future development plans. The overall layout maintains an appropriate transition to surrounding neighborhoods, and it makes sure that the open space requirements are met for this particular building, there's sufficient open space for it to be met onsite, and we also do review it at site plan. Traffic circulation, no real impacts to traffic because of this. We do have a condition from the original rezoning that's being maintained and continued to be a condition here, having to do with cost sharing, cost improvements, and then some cleanup in the plating process needs to happen, because they'll be removing that cul-de-sac right away, so we need the plat to reflect accurately what's going to be finally built. They did share rendering, so in this drawing, it's the building at the top left, farthest away, that is the building site that's being amended. We kind of get a little bit closer, and you can see the wellness center in front and the dwellings, the building containing the dwellings to the back. The parking is screened by that screen wall, so there is some parking up front. That's an option that they're pursuing through another administrative process, so we do ensure that there's screening and those things. Where there's some flexibility administratively, there are still ways to ensure that the design of those areas is still accomplishing the intent of the code. So that's not really part of this application tonight, but the renderings do kind of highlight some of those additional safeguards that they are keeping in place for creating a nice streetscape. The four additional units being proposed really don't have a great deal of impact on utilities or streets or traffic or anything like that. There are some angled parking spaces as well that are being approved for those multifamily buildings, and that is not really a new feature. As far as the impact on privacy and views and property values through an OPD rezoning compared to a conventional rezoning, really, there's not any more impact from this OPD than there could have been through a normal rezoning, and in fact, we get a lot more mixture and compact development and protection of sensitive areas by clustering development out of those areas. So overall, the OPD is of value to the public here. Building land use, building types, and modifying requirements. They are requesting a height increase for this building, the same as what they requested for all of the multifamily buildings in the rest of the development at the original rezoning, so that's not really much of a change, it's just applying it to the site as well. The additional height is proposed to accommodate an additional half-story on the top of the buildings to be used as rooftop patio space for the residents, so again, accommodating openness, light, and access to light and air for the residents of this building. And then adding to an additional building type, providing more units, obviously switching them from single-family to multifamily dwelling units for diversity of housing. So really, the two waivers that are being requested are in the public interest in immediately approved criteria. So this property does have sensitive areas. Again, those are wetlands, streams, and slopes and woodlands in this case, all protected as part of that final plat process that already happened in conservation easements, no changes to those proposed. Again, showing you where we are in the rezoning of the rezoning, and then needing to have a final plat process as well to eventually clean up the road network. So a good neighbor meeting was held on November 6th with the previous rezoning, and based on a review of the relevant criteria and specific criteria, staff recommended approval of the proposed rezoning with three conditions. One and two listed on the slide are the same as in the previous rezoning. Number three is a new staff recommended zone condition to clean up the plating, to show Camille Court no longer being there as a public street. And then the Planning and Zoning Commission at their November 20th meeting did propose a fourth condition, and that is that the height increase that is being granted with this waiver and this rezoning only applies to that building to the back of the lot, so restricting the first 90 feet of that lot to the normal height requirements and only allowing the height waiver for the buildings further back. So there are four conditions recommended with this application, and the conditional zoning has, agreement has been signed. So at its November 20th meeting, by a vote of four to zero, the Planning and Zoning Commission concurred with staff's opinion and added that additional zoning condition. Happy to answer questions.
Okay. Any question for Danielle?
Just to be very clear, that fourth condition is included in the signed CZA?
It is included in the signed CZA. Thank you.
Cool.
Any other question? Okay, public discussion. Anyone from the public would like to address this?
Hello, Mike Welch with Shoemaker-Holland. Steve Long, Sliida Partners, is also here and part of this development. I think Danielle did a nice job of kind of going through the changes. You saw it a couple of years ago, and we've been continuing to work with Western Home on the project and kind of refining it. It is under construction, so roads are ready to be paved in spring, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them, but.
Any question? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and also, one more time, are you going to be And also, one more time, are you going to be inclined with the planning and zoning? All right, close the public hearing. And may I have a motion to give first consideration?
So moved, Mo.
Moved by Mo.
Second, Burgess.
Second by Burgess. And council discussion.
While sometimes rezonings can be controversial, these seem great, and there's three of them, and I would love to have three proposed housing developments at every single meeting. So, I will be voting yes.
Yes. Okay, roll call, please.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes.
Motion basis five to zero. Okay, regular formal agenda. Item 10A, prohibited conduct on public buses. An order amending Title VI, entitled Public Health and Safety. Chapter eight, entitled prohibit conduct on public buses. Section one, entitled definition, to remove for a fear language. And section two, entitled prohibit act, to update language and add additional prohibited act. And this is a second consideration, but the staff is requesting expedite action on this. May I have a motion to waive the second consideration, please?
I move that the rule requiring that ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for the final passage at this time.
Moved by Mo.
Second.
Second by Burgess. Public discussion. No one? Council discussion. Okay, roll call, please.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Motion basis five to zero. And now, I need, may I have a motion to pass on adopt?
So moved, Mo.
Moved by Mo. Second by Harmsen. Roll call, please.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Motion basis five to zero. Item 10B, the motion for new patios in rental housing. An ordinance amending Title 17, entitled Building and Housing. Chapter five, entitled Housing Code, to clarify the dimensions of new patio in section 17.5 when 18Q, and to clarify, parking is not allowed on patios. This is a second consideration, but the staff is requesting expedite action. May I have a motion to waive the second consideration?
I move that the rule requiring that ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting which is finally passed be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Moved by Mo.
Second, Harmsen.
Second by Harmsen. Public discussion. I see no one. Council discussion. Roll call, please.
Mo.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Motion passes, motion passes five to zero. May I have a motion to pass on adopt?
So moved, Harmsen.
Moved by Harmsen.
Second, Alter.
Second by Alter. Roll call, please.
Sala.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Motion basis five to zero. Oh. Item number 11, council committee and appointment.
Wait, do we have the new patios?
Uh huh.
We just did that.
Oh, sorry.
We did that.
Oh, my God.
Yes. We just did that. Okay, discussion, we would like to discuss this committee. We have, we can discuss all of them, and after that, we can just have one motion to all of them. So, item 11A, comprehensive plan update steering committee. And this is like comprehensive plan service as, serve as high-level vision for land use policies informing decision that shape our building environment. And this process involving steering committee to evaluate public feedback and help set plan for that. So, who would like?
Mayor Protes, I feel it would be helpful, we can have Tracy Heichu come up and describe what the steering committee is a little bit more since it's a new one for you.
Yes, that would be great. Thank you.
Tracy Heichu, Neighborhood and Development Services. We're hoping that two members from council serve on the steering plan update committee. As Mazir said, you know, our comprehensive plan is that plan that has a high-level vision of our land use policies that will impact and inform our built environment for years to come. We have hired Confluence, a planning consulting firm, to help us with the update, and we update the plan periodically to reflect current goals and aspirations for our community. As a steering committee member, your contributions would include advising city staff and the consultant team reviewing plan drafts, helping finalize recommendations, and serving as a community ambassador to promote awareness and encouraging residents to participate in the process. We anticipate that the process will take about one and a half years, and that during that time, the steering committee would meet about seven times during that time. Their evening meetings, and the first meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, January 22nd.
Okay, that's one. Okay. Two, two council, right?
Yep.
Yeah. I don't have any questions. I just want to say I really want to do this, so.
You want to do it?
I do, very much so. What's the, Tracy, can you explain the, two, is two just feel like the right number to you?
Yeah. You know, you can't at a quorum.
Right.
We liked two. I don't know how Confluence came up with the number two, but that's what they recommended.
Okay. Okay, so the consultant recommended two, okay.
Okay, anyone else interesting?
I don't know if it's a magic number, but that was always.
Okay, yeah, we know that four is a problem number, so.
I'm interested, however, it's my son's 17th birthday on the 22nd, so I'd have to miss the very first one, but I would be all in on the rest of them. But I know that there's additional interest.
Anyone else?
I mean, I'm okay with Counselor Mo or Alter, but I also would have interest if we were going up to three. But if we're not, then I would be happy supporting.
Go for it. You sure?
Okay.
You want to ask for three? I mean.
But you didn't jump up and down.
I didn't jump.
Yeah, we wanted that. That was part of the, that was part of the.
Me, pick me.
Thank you.
Okay. I think the second one will be 11B, Economic Development Committee. We don't need to discuss that, so you know about this. We need to replace Andrew Dunn, who going, I'm interesting, but if somebody's really want to do it, I will do it next time.
I know this is jumping ahead a little, but since I've been on the Rules Committee before, I thought I would just.
Go to the Rules Committee.
Go to the Rules Committee, and so, just to kind of, I know it's jumping ahead, but that's kind of my thought, so.
Sure. And I'm just asking you.
I've already served on economic development, and I think it would be.
Sure, I would love to do that.
You'd have your first meeting tomorrow morning at 8:30.
Unless it's your son's 17th birthday. Just use that one for the first meeting for anything.
I hope if I have, like, birthday, okay. Yeah, no problem. I don't think they have a problem. Like, what time?
8:30.
It's 8:30. There is no expectation for voting at the meeting. It's more of an informational update from staff. We're trying to get into a quarterly cadence going forward on these, so if you do have conflicts, it's not a, it's not a problem. I think we're going to review building permits, and staff will give some general updates.
No, just like early meeting in the role. Today at 7:30, and tomorrow at 8 o'clock. No problem, yeah, I will do that. So, then, 11C, graduate and professional students government organization. That used to be underdone too.
Does anyone know how often?
I don't really know what that.
I think it's really on an as-needed basis. It probably has ebbed and flowed a little bit since it was first initiated, probably only three or four years ago. It's a relatively new appointment, but I don't think that there's standing meetings that I'm aware of that the council appointment, it's more of a liaison type of position.
That's what I was going to emphasize. It's a liaison position, not like a committee position where it'd be voting interest or anything like that. Is there a staff member who knows who that person is, who's the, we're liaising to?
Isn't it to the, our?
I would think we talked to our UI reps, yeah.
USG undergrad, because this is the graduate corollary to the US.
I still suspect they would know. They would know. We would, we would figure that out for you, and we'd probably just want to make that introduction and let them know that you're a resource for them.
Do we have to do this today?
That was going to be my question.
Yes, can we just like leave this for next time?
That'd be fine.
Yes.
Or for after the election.
Yes, after the election, that's what I went and I say exactly.
We probably just want to have, and we can do this at the end, but just a motion to defer to, do you want it, you said to after the election, so do you want to just do it indefinitely, or should we pick a date after the election and have a date?
Maybe the first meeting after the election.
Okay, we can do that.
Yeah.
So, do we need to make a motion for all items 11? Or would you like to do them independently?
I think, what I was trying to do is just select everyone, and after that, have one vote.
Okay.
For all of them. But now, we are deferring this. How you want us to do that, Eric?
I can make a motion to defer the 11C until the first meeting after the special election.
And I will second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, motion passes.
And then.
Okay, five, zero.
Five, zero. We have to say that too?
That's right.
Okay, five, zero.
I would like to move that Mo and Alter be appointed to the Comprehensive Plan Update Steering Committee, that Sala is appointed to the Economic Development Committee, and that Sean Harmsen, sorry, I couldn't think of your last name, Harmsen is appointed to the Rules Committee.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, move one second. Moved by Mo, second by Burgess. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign? Okay, motion passes five to zero. Okay. That's it. Okay. Now, we're going to go to item, council appointment, item 12A, Board of Adjustment. Board of Adjustments, when vacance to fill five years, term January 1st, 2025 to December 1st, 2029. And we have some applicant.
I would propose we select Julie Tallman, who's the Board of Adjustment.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
Guys have the handout already, yeah?
Mm hmm.
Okay. Okay, may I have a motion?
I would move, Mo moves to appoint Tallman.
Second.
Harmsen.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, move by Mo, second by Harmsen. And just all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign? Okay. Motion basis five to zero. Item number 13, announcement of vacant previous. 13A, announcement of vacant previous, Housing and Community Development Commission. When vacance to fill an expired term upon appointment, June 30, 2025, plus three years term, July 1st, 2025 to June 30, 2028. Applicant, application must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, January 14, 2025. Airborne zoning board of adjustment. When vacance to fill a five-year term, January 1st, 2024 to December 31, 2028. Airborne zoning commission. When vacance to fill a six-year term, January 1st, 2024 to December 31, 2029. Board of Abilts. When vacance to fill an expired term upon appointment, December 31, 2028. Hostile preservation commission, Jefferson Street. When vacance to fill a three-years term, January, July 1st, 2022 to June 30, 2025. And hostile preservation commission, Woodlawn Avenue. When vacance to fill an expired term plus a three-years term upon appointment, June 30, 2027. And vacance will remain open until felt. Item number 14, city council information. And. We went today, you want to talk about what we did today in the morning? Yes. The event that you and I went in the morning, want to talk about the event in the morning?
The immigrant welcome network?
No, no, the community foundation.
Sorry, yeah, this morning, there was a community foundation, and Think Iowa City hosted a learning session with the, the community foundation and Think Iowa City's. Yeah, legislative liaison or lobbyist, sorry, the word escaping me, the lobbyist learning just about what this upcoming session might look like, how the session works, how, what the goals of the community foundation are and what it does, and sort of how these public-private partnerships benefit all of us, but how that shouldn't be taken for granted, that we need to constantly advocate for those existing and continuing to exist.
Yeah. It was very interesting meeting, yes.
Were there any highlights as far as what they are seeing as upcoming for this year?
You know, I think everyone keeps hearing property tax reform, property tax reform, property tax reform, but nobody really knows exactly what that means, and it seems like everybody's waiting for somebody else to jump because property tax is so complicated, yet they've made the promise they're going to do something. So, I don't think we're, anyone's real certain about what that really means for all of us. So, is there anything else that I'm, that was, I mean, that was, I think everyone wanted to know, what is property tax reform? There are entertainment districts that are being considered at the state level that were sort of discussed at some level that seems like it could be a good thing, basically smids for entertainment districts, but.
Yeah. And also, they, like, each, I think, entity talked about what they do, like, for example, community foundations, even though I know community foundation for a long time, and when I was in the Center for, I guess we received grant from them. But it's still like today, like, going over all their numbers, and every time was very informative. And also, Think Iowa, I know Think Iowa, but today, when they go over what they do, it's just like amazing. So, have really great, doing a great thing. Anything else? Council?